America. One nation, under God, indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning, and welcome. I turn out today. We got the links in the house. Good to see everybody. We have Pastor Simon. First of all, thank this church, it's always an honor to have you.
Honored to be here.
Thank you for your presence.
But happy to be back.
Yeah. We got Heather Farm here, who's gonna be giving a presentation on clothes and strength, but I'm a little rusty, so let me get back to that, she's dropping out for a little while. Uh, this is the Mahoney County Commissioners Board meeting, it's number twenty. Today is Thursday, the twenty second, at approximately nine oh five A M. And at this time, I will ask Heather from come forward and talk about her wonderful roles.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for having me here and letting me speak a little on clothes and strength and our mission, and also to Commissioner Traffic Candy for supporting our mission in the past and attending one of our very first fundraising events that's now been a couple of years ago. Thank you, thank you so much. There were a lot of people there, so we were very thankful. Thank you so much. Uh, so just a little bit about us, if you're not familiar, Clothes and Strength, we're the new kids on the block. We launched just over two years ago in the spring of twenty twenty-three. And Clothes and Strength was launched out of pure, uh, a passion and a love of mine from a situation that I came from as a young single mother, um, leaving a domestic violence marriage and, uh, with all I could fit in my little car and my three-year-old daughter at the time. And at that time, I was attending Youngstown State University, uh, full-time to complete my bachelor's, which I did do in, uh, December of two thousand and seven, and also going to school full-time, forty-plus hours a week, sometimes working two jobs to support. And what I found during that time was that I fell in between receiving government assistance, I made too much money to receive government assistance. Um, however, I was in no way financially free. And so, all of these years later, fast forward, we have two daughters now, and I'm married, and it's, it's beautiful. Um, but it was on my heart all of these years to provide a resource to our single mothers in the valley and the surrounding areas to help be what I didn't have back then in my early twenties. And so, we launched Clothes and Strength. And what started as me just taking donations from the community, um, anything that was a basic need, clothing, shoes, um, home goods, turned in and operating out of one indoor storage unit in Boardman became us, became us operating out of five indoor storage units in Boardman and had serving dozens of women every month, both monthly, but also in emergency situations. Uh, we did that for a year and a half, and last May, we were able to purchase a property in Poland Village, right across from Town Hall, uh, where we grand opened at the end of September this past year, and we moved all of our operations to, uh, Poland. And so, it's been really great, we're centrally located, and so we're able to serve those, uh, in our surrounding area. We've served hundreds of women to date and their children. We have our boutique, which, um, we've also partnered with agencies like Project MKC, so we have diapers, wipes, feminine hygiene products every month. Um, we also, of course, still receive donations from the community, they've been tremendous to us. Um, and we offer financial grants to help with, uh, fi- uh, financially, like, emergency situations and such. And then we also serve as a community resource center. I sort, I spend a lot of my time in partner agency meetings, uh, like MyCap and United Way, and, um, just different, I mean, we have dozens of organizations to provide additional resources from these women. Organizations I wish I would have known about or been told about when I was in this same situation. Um, and so sixty percent of who we serve is in Mahoney County. We're growing by the week we're serving, and every month, we're serving between forty and seventy-five women. And every week, that's, there's a new woman that's opening or walking through our doors, which we're very thankful for. Um, and then, lastly, we just, uh, we recently submitted an operating request to, uh, the state with the support of Senator Katrona. Uh, we've had Representative McNally and Representative Blaisdell come through and see our facility. And we're just really thankful for any opportunity we get to get the word out, to reach more women, um, and to continue to seek support, um, as we grow, which has been at a very rapid rate. So thank you so much for just hearing about us and, uh, learning more about us. Yes, please. We have, yes, we, we've partnered with, um, Ursula Ministries and Beatitude House, especially through their scholars program, so their women are going to school and trying, um, to get on the other side of it, so we do work closely with them as well. Yes. Yes, and we've received, I've been talking to some of the sisters, and we've received, um, direct referrals from them as well, and then we send to them as well whenever the situation's applicable. Yes. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, commissioners, I'm gonna put some information sheets up there from Ms. Frong. If anybody else wishes to have any type of information. Okay, I'll just give you those. And this is the right person. And I'll leave a couple of these up there. Is anybody here else from both screen? Or anybody else like to comment on Heather's slogan?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're open today, so I have to.
Audrey, did you want to introduce some questions?
Well, I believe some of my link sisters were supposed to be here to hear the presentation, and I don't see them, so we are a part of an organization as well with the links that we do, uh, community events and do the clothing, so we are going to connect with this young lady, and, um, we didn't make it, so I don't know if any of the link, Youngstown chapter links.
You're here, you're presenting.
Your mom was there from the beginning.
Yes. Yes, we've done that, right, we do that all the time, and, uh, we're gonna work with her.
You have that big banquet every year up at the Avalon, I've come there many, many, many times in a banquet house.
Absolutely.
What a group you have.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Angie, did you want to say something?
Thank you, no, I have nothing to say.
All right, uh, public comments, three minutes, your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, June fourteenth, uh, I've got permission. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael Young. Uh, June fourteenth, I've secured permission from the City of Keenfield for the green, it's Flag Day, uh, Saturday, June fourteenth, from ten to twelve in the morning. Uh, just asking anybody that wants to come out, it's a non-political thing, just bring your flags, show patriotism for our, uh, for our, um, for our wonderful country. Um, if they'd like to get ahold of me, anybody like to get ahold of me, my phone number, three three zero, five six five, three seven five eight. Uh, those that do know me, I know Gino, uh, I've always been a big supporter of our military, my dad was in World War Two. Uh, my brother was twenty years in the Air Force, so I'm just very, uh, very passionate about our military, so I hope to see, uh, the community show up, show up for that. Thank you.
Eight seven, three. South Price Town Room.
I'm here to complain. My name is Gary Fiorini, and I live at sixty-nine seventy-two Villamarie Road. And the way I have what's like a Y in front of my house, because Villamarie extends into State Line Road and also goes down into Pennsylvania. Problem is, nobody wants to take care of my house in front of my house. I have, the county says that they're not responsible because they have a deal with Pulaski Township uh, to take care of State Line Road. My address again is sixty-nine seventy-two Villamarie Road. They stopped pay, they're gonna pay this year, they're gonna stop paying at the beginning of my property line. I'm, I'm, it's like living on an island. Nobody wants to take care of it. And, uh, I want something done about it. I mean, I'm getting tired, it's twenty years now. It's Quayville Township logo mailing address, you know, and when I moved there twenty years ago, they had a change of septic, I was told that I had to get my, uh, downspouts out of the septic. So, I ran pipe on top of the ground. There's a pipe that goes across the street into Pennsylvania to nowhere, so I ran the pipe, my pipe, all the way down to it, thinking the next summer I would put them in the ground. Well, we lost half the pipe because they froze, because the pipe that goes across the street goes nowhere. And the county keeps telling me that it's not their job, but yet when I moved in there, they told me I had to replace the pipe under my driveway. Which, I bought the pipe and the county came out and did. Now, once they don't take care, you know, it's not their job no more. But I need to put my water somewhere. And I, for twenty years, I've been fighting this, and it's getting ridiculous. I have to get off the lawnmower, move pipe, cut the grass, put the pipe back, you know, it's, it's, it's getting old. Another problem, for twenty years, uh, we have out-of-state garbage trucks coming to State Line and Villamarie. For twenty years, they knocked down mailboxes, caused damage to my yard, my neighbor across the street, uh, in Pennsylvania. Uh, I asked the police if they could possibly call the GPS, they told me to do it myself, I thought maybe the police would have a little bit more authority than me calling. Uh, but we gotta do something about it, they're, they're crushing your roads out there, these are semi-trucks. And when they start turning on this, you know, trying to turn around, they're doing damage everywhere. So if we could just, you know, pave to the, my driveway, get me a ditch that flows down the road, and, uh, I would be a happy camper. You know, I don't pay my taxes to Pennsylvania, I pay them to Ohio. And I'm probably the only guy that got mud at their mailbox for twenty damn years. Yes, sir, I did call you, and I, I appreciate you calling me back.
You check it in, thanks, the notes are on my desk, thumbs.
I say, you know, jump in the car, all three of you, take a ride out to my house, and I could show it to you. It's real easy, you could see that it's a mess. Last year, oh yeah, last year, Pennsylvania did put a quarter inch, they sprayed some tar on the ground, threw some chip, and that's what I got in front of my house. Not, not a couple coats, just one.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Morning to the commissioners, glad to see Mr. Trap Candy back. We appreciate the partnership we've had throughout the years, go off, open County Commissioners Law. I was at the meeting at the last commissioners meeting out in Goshen Township, and two gentlemen that did a presentation concerning, uh, board of elections and that move. And I heard your response, and so, I'm addressing this letter to the County Commissioners, dear Commissioners, Fabio, Remedia Rogetti, and Traffic Candy. On behalf of the, oh, I didn't say my name, Kenneth, Reverend Kenneth Simon, one thirty-three Gypsy Lane, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five zero seven. Representing the Community Mobilization Coalition of Greater Youngstown. On behalf of the twenty-five minority organizations that make up the Greater Youngstown Community Mobilization Coalition, otherwise known as CMC, I would like to address the issue of the proposed move of the Board of Elections and possibly other county departments and offices to the counties recently purchased Austintown building and express our concerns. The first concern is the fact that this move has been proposed and is being pushed by the Board of Elections without any public hearings or input from the residents of the county that it would affect the most. Youngstown is the county seat. They have the most registered voters in the county. The essential departments of the county have always been located in the county seat. Job and Family Services, Board of Elections, Title Department, Children's Services, just to name a few. Moving the Board of Elections outside of the city would further disenfranchise voters in the city of Youngstown who already have challenges with transportation to participate in the election process. We are not questioning or challenging the conditions of the current facility on Oak Hill Avenue that houses the Board of Elections and other county agencies. Our concern is why are we moving these essential services outside of the county seat when there are plenty of options within the city of Youngstown to accommodate the needs of all the departments? Has there been any research, investigation, or consideration given to the options within the city that would help the most vulnerable population to access the essential services they need? We are already dealing with a climate created by our national and state government leaders that marginalizes minorities, people of color, and impoverished citizens of all races in our nation and is insensitive to the needs of the residents of our inner cities. voter suppression laws, the attack on public education, and the elimination of D E I programs are sending a clear message to the African-American community that our needs and concerns don't matter. We are formally requesting that our county leaders hear and consider the concerns we raised to you today. Reconsider this move. Schedule public hearings on the matter and respond to the Community Mobilization Coalition directly before a final decision is made. Sincerely, Reverend Kenneth L. Simon, Chairman, Community Mobilization Coalition, and Jalal Ashlam, Vice Chair.
Reverend Simon, number one, nothing's been decided.
Yes.
As far as who's going where, what we're gonna do. If you have a list of buildings that can accommodate everything we have at Oak Hill, I'd love to see that, if you, if you have that, that would be great. And as far as the building in Austin town, what the hell we gotta do with it? We want a building now. It's gotta be utilized for something.
I'm, I'm sure it can be resold. I'm sure.
That's, I don't, I don't know if that's on a case, in all honesty, I don't know if that's on a case, you got to do something. And we're certainly, we're certainly, we're looking at every option we have for everything. And we haven't worked, and I mean, if people know or doesn't, don't think we're doing, you know, we're sitting still, we're not. But nothing has been decided, nobody's marked, has been marked in there, here's where you're going, there's where you're going. And whatever we decide, like, nothing to do with.
So that portion of it was there. It was going, that was, was beside for that. Um, there were things looked at, were election being one. Uh, other areas of the county being others. But the definite move for every other department would have, would be centrally located in the city. J F S will never move out of the city, I promise you that. That is, the hubs for those departments are right here in Youngstown. You know, so that J F S department will never be out of the city. Some of those anti-partments in there will never be out of the city. Board of Elections are looking at it, it has enough proof for them. Uh, the definite loop of what we're doing now, because we're looking at some of the places downtown. So, it's, it's not gonna be a quick decision because the way it's structured, you know, what we have to do with parking. Because when you move, kind of make sure downtown has parking, facilitate the J F S. I mean, you surely can't have those people walking. I'm sorry, I get on my hands.
In any decision, we don't back you.
Okay.
Any decision made will not be based on try to disenfranchise anybody's book, take away anybody's book, none of us none of us support that up here, I'm sure, I hope you know that, I'm sure you know that. That's not, that's not anything, we want, we want what's best for the entirety of the county and all the residents of the county. Make considerations where we can, where it makes sense for everyone. You know, just with that, that.
It's just that the greater population of registered voters in the city, and then we want to, if we take it outside of the city, they're gonna be challenged the most, the most vulnerable, and we just want that to be considered before we make that rash decision. I do have copies of the letters to, for each commissioner and, uh,
After my decision of the box shade. Keeping all the agency, the cities. I'm setting a hundred.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next. Okay, thank you very much. This time, uh, we'll move into the business portion of our meeting, and Gerald.
Motion for the approval of previous commitments ordered in nineteen Tuesday, May third, eighth, ninth, and the fifteenth, the original same.
Second.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti, Commissioner Traffic Candy.
Yes, Gerald entry.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti, Commissioner Traffic Candy.
Yes, travel to eight, auditors, the Mel.
Morning, commissioners, uh, this is a request to attend an InfoTech Live Conference of twenty twenty-five in Las Vegas, Nevada, June ninth, fifty-four. This is one of the largest, uh, conferences simply geared towards directors of IT and like information officers. Attended last year, received great benefits from it, this year, uh, they're adding an additional feature where government, uh, IT leaders are going to be given their own forum to discuss current trends and topics in technology. And especially with the sense of where, where artificial intelligence is going. There's gonna be a number of roundtables for how that interacts with government. Safety surround AI, we do some things like law enforcement or legal matters, so it's very great benefit for myself to travel there and learn more about what's going on with technology in Carolina.
Thank you.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti, Commissioner Traffic Candy.
Yes, agreements, A to G will begin with, uh, E and A.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, this is an agreement with C N R Electric for the purchase and installation of a generator for the communication tower on Kirk Road. Um, this generator serves as a backup power source should the, uh, regular, excuse me, uh, electricity go out. And, um, it is eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's non-general.
Thank you very much. Engineers.
B is an agreement with MS Consultants for the right-of-way acquisition of the Glenwood Avenue Road Diet Project in the amount of fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. C is an agreement with Bowman Appraisal Services for the right-of-way acquisition of the Glenwood Avenue Diet Project in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. These are both non-general, ninety percent O-Dot funds.
Thank you. Facilities.
D is an agreement with T L B Ground Maintenance LLC for lawn care services at various county buildings in the estimated amount of fourteen thousand general funds.
Great, thank you. And Johnson family.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, Audrey, Holly, and Jim Fortunato over there. Job and Family Services, letter E is an agreement with Nesco Resource LLC for the Chanif Summer Youth Program in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Non-general. Letter F, Job and Family Services Agreement with the Ohio C S E A Directors Association for Clear Location Services for two years in the estimated amount of two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. Non-general.
Thank you, Audrey. And treasures, Mr. Donald.
Yes, good morning, everyone. This is, uh, an amendment to an agreement we have in place with diversified companies, Dico Data is the company that successfully bid to be our vendor for tax preparation, admitting and mailing. The amendment is going to allow us to, uh, extend the agreement. Renew the agreement for two more years. We're very satisfied with the service they provide.
Thank you. Motion.
Motion for the approval of number three, agreements made through G.
Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti, Commissioner Traffic Candy.
Yes, resolutions. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traffic Candy.
Yes, resolution, one, two, three, J. A, E, C.
Good morning, commissioners. A is a resolution to turn from general fund to the information technology fund in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is for a P C refresh account in, uh, like, five and six year. B is a resolution authorizing the establishment of the county courts O B I Special Projects Fund. And C is a resolution authorizing an M O U with, uh, green township and the county engineers for a sales project in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, three ten ninety-two.
And facilities, Al.
D is a resolution of necessity to purchase supplies and services for the replacement and relocation of the auditor's office air handler unit from Johnson Controls to the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Thank you, sir. And grants management.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of the equipment to subway's agreement with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the community-based correctional facility in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. I have C E S, Dave Stowagon here today from C C A to say a few words.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
With authority, Commissioner, New York City, in nineteen eighty-six, the Ohio Department of Corrections went through the state for capital dollars to establish community-based correction facilities throughout Ohio. Mahoney County community-based correction facilities, that's the first established through state capital dollars. As such, over the years, facility previously to be made, uh, the facility was extended and added on in nineteen ninety-five. And then subleases, uh, were executed starting in twenty fifteen for capital purposes.
Thank you so much. And human resources, data.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a resolution from Human Resources and Data of, of the necessity to purchase online learning solutions from Kara Soft Technology Corporation slash Udemy Incorporated through the Omnia Corporative Purchasing Program for three years in the estimated amount of one hundred and three thousand dollars, one hundred and three, five hundred and six for, uh, the first year.
Yeah, just add on, this is a partnership between data and H R, sorry, with data. Uh, me looking for a way to continuing educate, provide continuing education to my staff for new technology. And then, uh, H R, uh, questioned whether or not there was a learning management system available for the county to provide the same for the entire county, all the employees of the county. So this partnership formed between my department and H R, and we found this to be a very beneficial program. Provide education, training, certifications, and a way to manage all of this through one platform.
Very good. Good synergy there for the good cause. Sanitary. Joe.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, T is a resolution for necessity to purchase one two thousand twenty-five Ford Explorer from, uh, Seventy-Two Hour, which is National Auto Fleet Group uh, through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And H is a resolution approving the waterline easement request by Aqua Ohio for point zero three one five acre easement located in Boardman Township.
Very good, thank you. And Sheriff. Brands.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I is a resolution accepting the twenty twenty-five Marine Patrol Assistance Grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and Division of Wat- Watercraft in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents with a twenty-five percent required match.
Okay, thank you, Adam. And treasures, Trilla.
This, uh, Ohio revised code mandates that we enter into pository agreements with any bank with which we have made into a depository relationship. Uh, this is done every four years, they require we renew the agreements every four years. Twenty twenty-five is the year, so you won't see this in front of you again until twenty twenty-nine. They're all still. But thank you.
Okay.
Motion for the approval of the two resolutions, A to B, Commissioner.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti, Commissioner Traffic Candy. Commissioner Traffic Kenny?
Yes. And the order, can you act with officials or sharp events here?
Yeah. I have a copy. Yes. I just wanted to inform the Commissioners that we were recognized Mahoney County Job and Family Services by the State of Ohio for the last three years. And twenty twenty-three, we received a silver, I think I shared that with you guys, uh, for SNAP application and timeliness. And twenty twenty-four, we received a silver for ninety-seven point percent satisfaction and compliance. And in twenty twenty-five, we went down to the bronze, but we were still in the top three in Mahoney County, um, throughout the whole state of Ohio. So just to let you know, we are doing great with timeliness and accuracy for food stamp issuance.
Congratulations. Thanks.
I have another question.
I hope I can answer it.
Anything about Medicaid?
Um, as a matter of fact, our directors are on a call today, and that is up and down in the state of Ohio and in Washington. And we get one, some information, then it's pulled back, then it's gonna happen. So far, what we've been told at JFS is that they're going to change the age requirement and work requirements for anyone that's applying for Medicaid or medical. You will be required to work, but they will be looking at waivers for certain individuals. But that is one of the things coming down the pipe. And in order to get your food stamps, you still have to work, and they changed the age requirement for that. So those things are still in the House, I understand?
And not official.
Yeah. As this, as I said, we're having a meeting today.
Keep us informed.
I sure will.
I was gonna say, keep us informed.
We don't wanna see that.
Yeah. It's a lot.
Who? Oh, Ralph?
Good morning.
There you are.
Ralph, could you screw up on this screen?
It's my gift. I do it naturally.
I'm sorry. Do you have something to say, Ralph?
Do you wanna talk?
No, no, I just dropping in to see what the topics were today.
Okay.
Is it late?
Any other departments? Jimmy?
Memorial Day, Monday. It's a day to, it's a day we need to reflect and honor our men and women who died in their service for our freedom. Talk about World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and other conflicts. It seems like in today's times, all these holidays are running together. People under, don't understand the difference between Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Fourth of July. And I wish all these sales commercials would indicate a percentage of the sales money is going to benefit veterans. Because we've lost, in my opinion, what Memorial Day and others are for our veterans. If you think about Arlington National Cemetery and the monument there for the unknown soldier that every day, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's honored. That message, if we could just keep that out, is what we should be thinking about, the sacrificing. Here you have someone unknown being recognized, and over fifty percent of our people do not know what Memorial Day really is. So thank you for letting me say.
Thank you, Jimmy.
That's, you know, that's solemn. You were from the cemetery or the services. Right. It's, when we look at all the men and women that passed away from, from being in the military, from, I mean, my dad was a little kid, and I know when he came home, my mother said there was never discussion about what he did here, until later on in life, and then he told my brother things. But it was like things wanted to make, keep us free, but also they didn't wanna remember all of the tragedies that happened. One thing he did say is you couldn't leave back then, kids had gone up on the front lines at seventeen years old, eighteen. He said, lie about the age just to go, and get one's life. When you listen to that, and of course, that was around the Vietnam War, and that is, thank God, now people recognize that as being a war and protect those men and women that were there, treated like humans, like every other service person, because that war was horrific. I mean, our, our men and women were abused and abused in that, that conflict. And I've seen, I had friends that come back. Unbelievable. But, you know, I think the three of us, we've always participated in, in, in any military events, whether we go to the same one or we split up, go to all different ones. I, you know. We just kind of pray, that's all. That's, that's God that protects all of our country, all of our men, all our medical services, you know. Thanks, Jimmy.
I just want, I'm the one welcoming you back. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna miss you, I really did. I missed everyone too. I said almost.
Did you see I got the number?
Good to have you back and helping. Remind us all, you know, how important our help is. So, you know, this could be, be fun in a second. We gotta take care of everything. Last week was National, and some celebrations still going on, but I tell you what, I'm worried just a little bit. I wanna especially thank our sheriffs. The sheriff won down every one of them, period, about they did, not just paramedical police beat, but every day. And we were able to go out and do freely in here and not worry as much about crime and everything, because these guys, these men and women, they signed up for that job. A lot of times, thank, we, we do appreciate you. And as far as Reverend Simon, we're still, still working, but.
Thank you very much.
Lots to do. But we're gonna have some, hopefully, in the future. We do have a building now, we have to do something, do something. We're working on it. And here we go. They'll look into your, then I told you, just give me a few days, and I check into it right out. Anybody calls, I follow up, I can help you with that. If the answer is, it's not the right answer, not the answer you like, sorry. We try to help everybody with whatever we can. And it just seems like we get all the.
I don't know, I think it's pretty cut and dry. I'm sorry to say that, but if I ruffle your feathers, but it's, you know, you're gonna pave, you're not a little named Vill Marie, and I live on it, why don't I get paved?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, or that maybe could end in Sydney, Pennsylvania.
Well, again, I agree with what everybody said. You know, Memorial Day, I remember my dad, he was one who dropped out of high school and actually enlisted in the Navy. And he served five years in the Navy, and he always, through years, talked about, I wonder if any of my shipmates are still alive. And he always talked about those times on an aircraft carrier, he spent time on the USS Carissage, uh, the USS Bigfoot. He says, that aircraft carrier, he's big, was, he said, stopped going with a little bobber, and amended that scene. And I said, the military taught him some diet lessons, and, you know, we, we deserve respect in the back of the military in this country. Things may not be perfect, they may not like what we see and what we hear, but if you don't have the military, look who's gonna take us over, and look what's waiting for us. When you have China, Russia, Iran, building the most sophisticated weapon systems in the world, that can hit this country, Washington, the sea within thirty minutes, I don't see how that's even in the paint. And it's unfortunate that our country has to spend one trillion dollars on defense. Imagine what one trillion dollars could do to lift people out of poverty, build hospitals, treat people for cancer, heart issues. But it's just the way the world is, so I have the utmost respect for our law enforcement, our safety services, and our military. Jimmy, thank you for your service very much. Okay, our next meeting?
Is, uh, next Thursday, May twenty, that's okay. Thursday, May twenty-ninth, uh, here in the hearing room at ten o'clock.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Trump. Second. Roll call.
Commissioner DeFabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traffic Kenny?
Thank you.